Monday, August eighteenth at five thirty here at the Red Oak Fire Station. Located at nineteen oh four North Broadway. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and is available on our YouTube channel. And also, um, I do ask that everybody just silence their phones, which I had to do as well. Um, invocation by Pastor A.J. Barrata with First Christian Church.
Yeah.
Yes, you're first up.
Lord God, thank you so much for this time to come together and continue to do your will and your work here in Red Oak. Continue to give us the energy and the passion and the drive to continue to do your work to make this place as good a place, not only to to live and grow, but to fellowship and grow together in ministry and in friendship. We say all this in Jesus's name.
Thank you so much. Uh, let's see, Adam.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Uh, Bradley here. Bill?
Here.
Right off?
Here.
Buster here. Hebraic.
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
Right off? Second. Bradley?
Yeah.
Roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Hebraic?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. We don't have anything tonight. Number seven is public comments. And I'll just remind everyone that you have three minute limits. And you come to the podium, state your name and your address. Uh, Ashley has a thirty second um sign that she holds up when you have thirty seconds remaining. And let's see, Levi Franks?
Thank you. I believe I Franks Jr. by Old Seven East Knuckles. And uh, what I'm talking, what I've talked about is some stop signs on Knuckle Streets. I've heard that they're supposed to have two of them. Down there, yeah, way back when. And there's nothing been done so far. One at Eighth Street and one on Fifth. And that was all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, and Jeff, you're gonna be here to talk about our project, so I assume that's why you signed in?
Eight and fifth on on.
Well, that's what I was told. There's one on the eighth going well, east, that there's not the one on them coming this way west is the yield sign.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to get clarification because I wasn't sure we're doing that.
Then they want one on one fifth because there's a lot of traffic that goes down through there. And they got kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments online?
None online.
Okay. Number eight is department reports. I don't believe we have any today. Number nine, consent agenda. I'd take a motion to approve the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting of eight four twenty-five and also the special council meeting on eight eight twenty-five. Uh, the receipt of minutes from the downtown urban renewal board on eight six twenty-five, as well as the library on eight eleven twenty-five. And then the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five claims to be paid in the amount of one thousand three hundred or sorry, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one sixty-seven and seventy-seven cents. Does it have to kind of comment now, or do you have to?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, bills?
Second.
And right off? Now it's your discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just because this is my whole life. It would be nice. I mean, I don't mind if these come in when they come in, but it would be nice if it was highlighted or something so that we know what is different. Because there's no way, and I do take this very seriously, there's no way of knowing what they are without you telling me. And if you want to tell me, that's fine too, but I just think it would better highlight it or something.
I didn't realize they were mixed. I thought it was only the new bills, or I, yes, we'll do something better.
Thank you. That's my only thing.
While we're talking about, are we any closer to finding out what our whole uh, very?
Well, we're finally getting to March, which means then that now we have to start getting into the new world to learn when correct.
So we're getting pretty close.
Well, we still are. Now we're in August, so.
Still.
All right, thank you.
We're getting there. I mean, it's, we have Cindy helping us with Ashley.
Any surprises so far?
Um, I mean, I don't know what surprise means.
Something that's gonna shock us.
Things that we didn't.
The general fund is not healthy. But you're gonna hear about that on your audits.
Yeah.
There's not a big surplus there. But we talked about that at budget time and the decisions that you've made in the past and how you fund things is partly why.
Yeah. All right. So do you want to know anything specific on her before? I have a motion in a second.
I would know the task, but I'm okay. I mean, but I just think moving forward, it'd be it would be a good idea.
Yeah, we'll highlight them next time. I apologize.
I think you have done it before where it's just been the addition.
Texted and said she did last time, but not.
Yeah.
It was.
I think this time was mixed.
Yeah, in the past, we've just had additional planes.
Thank you, Karen. All right, roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Sorry.
Wow. Hebraic?
Yes.
I do say yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
That wasn't even close.
Did you get a vote?
Not even a resent works there.
Thank you, thank you. All right, number ten. Presentation of our fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit and Mr. Timothy Linz from Bergen KDB is with us today. Thank you for the nice presentation, too.
Thanks to the introduction. I'm Tim Linz of Bergen KDB. Lisa and Ashley um, on the audit after we discussed and hope it's been most of the work. I just oversaw that. Um, but happy to be here and present some results. I'll give high level of those goals and then uh, if you guys want to dive into any details or want to have further discussions, I'm really happy to always pick a phone and talk to you guys soon. Um, what was included in our packet electronically and as well as passed out uh, to you prior to the meeting. What we issue is our audit report. You can find that on pages three through six. Um, and what that's indicating is that we're giving an unmodified opinion on cash basis of accounting, so cash in, cash out. So cash in is your revenues and cash out is your expenses. It does not show a full picture of the the city excluding receivables and payables and those type of things, capital assets. Um, but we give an unmodified opinion of the governmental activities, business type activities. Each major fund that's presented there, the aggregate discreetly presented component unit, then the aggregate remaining fund information. So that's what we want. We want an unmodified opinion on that. We also, in there, have an adverse opinion just due to those financial statements excluding the Red Oak Low Rent Agency uh, component unit. So not anything bad to those financial statements, just it's excluded and so we just have to call that out. So if you're trying to understand the lingo in there, that's what that's saying.
Can you expand on that just a little bit more?
Sure.
On the low income.
Why that's excluded?
So if it's.
It's the apartments that we don't manage and we don't have their books to be reviewed.
You don't have their books. Um, and so they can't be combined in here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But they, is it proper that they would be?
Yeah, because you have
Because we have points.
Oversight over them and you appoint theirs board, so should be treated as a point included in here. That's something we can look at adding in the future if that's if we can get cooperation, um, and getting those books. I know this fiscal year, this is June thirty twenty-four, so we're talking. We're just trying to get it done and um, move on to FY twenty-five that just wrapped up.
We can advise them for the fiscal twenty-five audit, but.
Yep.
So would that be the case with all of our uh, housing that deals with low income then?
It's not about that. It's just that I'm bored because we don't wait that forward.
I understand, so.
We don't appoint any other.
But they they handle like the would handle like the acorn acres and so this new apartment complex comes into that as well as.
I don't oversee eight acres.
That's a different thing altogether. So.
And it's low income. It's that we have a housing board that oversees. Is it on Summit? The apartments? Where's the apartments that they oversee with?
No, it's on fourth.
Brian Lorette is on the board.
That would be acorn acres.
It's acorn acres.
It's acorn acres.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's actually houses, plots of houses.
I guess I'm just trying to establish in my brain who that would be.
It is, it is. And whatever they oversee.
Yeah.
It's not because it's a low income. It's because that board is appointed by the city.
That's our affordable housing committee, correct?
Oh, we call it.
It's a good question. It is a good question because we do have other low income housing in town and our that board does not oversee that much.
Nothing to do with.
And they shut the fence.
Which is not like a housing authority, which would have oversight over.
I think that wasn't enough past audits and no shit.
So I have read your 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 briefs, but they're very confusing to me.
Yes, yes.
They're, you know, way above my level on most paragraphs, so.
So it down.
Yes, thank you.
Pages, yeah, happy to answer questions. Yeah, thank you.
And just to clarify, like the Library Foundation provides the money to the library. And so even though that's a separate organization, they have to provide their financials to the auditors. The Fire Association is not us, but because their only reason for existing is the Fire Department, they have to provide their financial records. So this is like those, but that's not a deficiency because they provided it.
Yeah.
So they probably never brought it up before, but.
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna say in their defense, I bet they never knew, didn't know.
No.
I'm guessing, but yeah.
And the Fire and Library Foundation, those are included in here. So like if you flip to page nine, you'll see the component unit for the Library Foundation shown there. So that's what it would look like if this uh, this other agency were to have its financial statements included in here. But our being in the thing, if not here, though, it's not a full picture of everything that the city has oversight over. If that helps.
It does, thank you.
Um, so yeah, just getting into the financial statements, just high level. Um, what you see here, if you go to page eight through eleven, those are your government-wide financial statements. So that gives a picture of the city as a whole on the cash basis. So you see the action investments on what's coming in and what's being dispersed is shown there. And so if you looked at here the uh, so it just shows um, the change in the cash there, and that's shown on the bottom bottom portion of page nine. You have to look at the headings on page eight to do double sided there. Um, so you have your change in cash basis net position um, showing there um, in total, by government activities and business type activities. So those activities, your utilities, those are shown as your business type activities. All your governmental activities is in your governmental activities sections there. Um, I'll explain more if we just get to the financial information for the general um, general fund and explain that. And there's some charts and graphs in the communications letters, which is the other document that probably helps you all better understand that um, versus what I understand of the seventy-some pages of financial data. Uh, following those government-wide financial statements, you get into your governmental fund financial statements. Those can be found on pages twelve through fifteen. And that will show those major funds, the general fund, the vote used tax, the play benefits, the local sales tax, tax increment financing, the debt service fund, the capital projects funds. All those in a separate column. So if you want to see how those funds are performing individually, you can look there to see what cash came in, what cash went out. And so then you can look down at that net change in cash fund balance, um, the third from the bottom line on pages twelve and thirteen. So you see that the general funds cash went down seven hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately. The road use tax went down a hundred thousand just due to timing of how cash is coming in and going out. So that's probably the line you want to look at to see that. And then the bottom two lines show where your cash was at the beginning of the year. And then net of the current year's activity, where it ended as of June thirty twenty-four. So obviously we have fifteen months that have gone by since here. So these numbers have all changed. Following those, we get into page sixteen and these are voluntary financial statements. It'll show that cash receipts, cash dispersments for the water, sewer, landfill, soil and water for your utility funds. And you can look at those and identify how they're operating um, versus what how cash receipts are matching up against your uh, dispersments and whether or not you need to adjust your expenses or revenues to make those on themselves.
Typically sewer and water, since you're using water and you're processing, it should be about the same, right?
Well, I think that the reason that we're in a significantly negative
just because.
Position with sewer is the way that you've been billing.
Yeah.
Is that people use water throughout the year and you bill them based on three months when no one uses a high amount of water. So if you remember, like, we talked about the fact that the way we build for sewer is we take the bills from January to February, February to March and March to April that we bill February one, sorry. Yeah. Uh, March, April and May first bills. You take those three uses of water. You average that and then that's what people get billed for sewer all year. So it's it's an like, so when we talk about the rates, when Chip brings that back to us, I have suggested that that's gotta see. If you use water, you need to pay for it in sewer.
Yeah, because we're basically a million short, a little over.
Not a million or short, but look at the difference between the fund balance at the bottom of page sixteen. You have one, it's not that we're short or shorter, yes.
We're shorter, so one.
So you have one point two million dollars and the sewer is an equal operation budget. And you have basically no money if anything goes wrong.
Yeah.
In sewer.
Yeah.
And people don't understand that, but it's a consequence of, it's not really, I mean, rates are low here on both sides, but you are throwing lots of water out that, you know, obviously in the basis of doing this way is you say, well, in the summer you water your grass or you water your flowers. And so some of that doesn't get treated. The vast majority of it does get treated.
And okay, so a little bit of a segue, but have we um, looked at changing rates for commercial industrial accounts to?
So insignificant. I mean, yes, we will talk about many communities will say the size of your meter is the basis of your base rate. So it's not, it's not that like they're gonna pay a different amount for every cubic foot of water that they use. But if you have a a typical meter at a house is a five eighths inch meter for a house. So that's twenty-four hundred of our customers is residential. And then most of our commercial are the same size because everybody downtown, everybody that operates a business that uses normal water also has that. So we have two dozen large meters. It's not gonna make a difference. So yes, we can look at having a slightly increased base of water for a second or a two inch, three inch, four inch, and it goes up to six inch, but it's twenty-four customers. So you could say you're gonna do that, but it's not changing anything when you have such a small amount of larger customers, customers with larger meters. It's just, it's not impactful. But that is why. I mean, if I watch the number of gallons out every month and then look at what we're billing for sewer. It's just, yeah, it's, we're not. Ten percent. Look at over time, you know, we have ten percent in savings for sewer compared to water.
So are you telling me that these commercial users that have these larger services are not, they're not a big impact on our system? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm saying that even if you significantly increase twenty-four customers out of twenty-seven hundred, it's not gonna make a difference. Like you can't gouge them.
That's not, that's not what I'm, I'm not implying that.
It's just not gonna make a difference. Like in many communities I've worked in, you have forty percent of the customers are forty percent of your water usage is coming from commercial. Here, it's even our industrial customers are not significant bills.
I see. So so it was just my understanding and other, and I'm just talking about other communities up from there, which seems like they uh, their rates were based upon usage, kind of exponentially, the more you use, the more your rates based on the the demand on the system.
Typically, though, it's the the higher number of gallons, you pay less per unit.
Well, I think depending on the community, I think that can work the other way, too.
Yeah, I've never seen it that way. It's usually the size of your meter.
When you go out west and waters the new gold, it does work that way.
Yeah, well, we're not in always.
I understand. I understand. I'm just going based on what I, what's in my brain.
So what I've seen when there's a difference is it's the meter size. So you say everything that's one inch or smaller is this base fee that right now people pay ten dollars and twelve dollars for water and sewer. Whether you use a drop or not, you pay the same. And then if you said a two inch meter, a three inch meter, a four inch meter. So like right now, we're giving Chip that number of how many are two, three, four, or five, but it's.
I understand.
But the bigger thing is the difference between where we're not charging in sewer that we should at least be the same.
Most cities, if you use a thousand units of water, you pay a thousand units of sewer.
Yeah.
Because you could do some small credit in this, but.
Yeah.
Do you have the numbers on that?
I mean, I could just pull a few people up, but it's and the only, the only way that like the customers have the disadvantage is when you have a blip on your radar as a customer, when you have a leak in the bad months.
Mm-hmm.
Then you pay for the leak for a whole year, but you don't pay for the leak that month. So people pay for like twelve months, you know, because if you take, if your house is usually using three hundred units. So for two of your months, you have three hundred and then all of a sudden you have a thousand unit month. Now you took three hundred instead of nine hundred divided by three to get your average of three hundred. If you take three hundred, three hundred and a thousand, and now you have sixteen hundred divided by three, you pay more for twelve months than you would if you just paid one month of a thousand. So the only people that really get the negative in the way we do it to the customers negative is if they have
Have a leak.
Uh, leak during that time. Otherwise, it's disadvantaged to the system.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take.
No.
Thought that was.
So page sixteen shows your utility fund. So look at that, make some decisions on that that information on are they self-sustaining? Um, and you need to charge more or do you need to manage manage expenses there? So um, starting on page seventeen, you get into the notes of the financial statements. So that's just a lot of accounting jargon to explain how things are reported here. So um, but not bore you, I'll skip through those. Um, but you need some light reading material and bedtime material. That's there. If you want to understand, feel free to read it and call me when you don't understand something. So um, looking back to page thirty-six, thirty-nine, this is your budgetary schedule. So this looks at the city's expenses compared to your adopted budget that you adopted for due the fiscal year June thirty twenty-four. What this is showing is that the the city complied with the adopted budget, so in total. Uh, there might be some areas that you overspent, um, but that's just a summary of of that fiscal year. Pages forty through forty-four, just additional required information, um, disclosed information on the pension. I think I'm gonna draw your attention to there. Pages forty-six through fifty-one are the providing schedules. So they will combine all those non-major funds and bring them up to those to the aggregate column of the fund financial statements that were back on page uh, twelve through fifteen. So this just shows you a picture of all your funds that uh, that are combined into one column on the statements upfront.
Page forty-six, you always ask about if we have LMI money for like loan programs, that's that third column, the ninety-seven thousand, which it would have more interest. But.
And we have none of that earmarked presently, correct?
Just has to be for LMI purposes.
And then going to page fifty-two through fifty-three, that is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards because we received some federal grants. I would expend those. During this fiscal year, the city expended just under one point eight million dollars of federal funds that triggered you to have to have a single audit, uh, which we also have in our packet here. Um, we have, we tested the the airport improvement program as a major program this year. I think that's typically your your major program. Um, so.
And the threshold is seven fifty in the year, so.
This year is seven fifty and then um, FY six thirty twenty-five will still be seven fifty. It'll be your twenty-six year. That'll jump to a million to determine a major program.
So they take the cumulative of what we get from the feds. And if you're over that threshold, then you have to have a separate document that that's part of their rules.
Yeah, we go through
Separate audit.
A process to determine which are your major programs and what the federal government determines is risky. Um, and then there's thirteen compliance requirements that are potentially applicable. Each federal agency determines which ones they want for each program that they offer. And then we go through, there's a compliance supplement that shows all the procedures that we need to do as your auditors to determine if there's any non-compliance. Um, we did not identify any non-compliance in the federal program destined this year. So that's good. Um, and no material weaknesses related to that. So following that, we get to a couple of our other reports. Page fifty-five is our report over internal controls and over financial reporting, uh, plants. Uh, we did have a few findings there. Um, I know the city's already making progress in resolving some of those. Um, one being a lack of segregation duties. That's a reoccurring one just due to the size of the organization. It's very difficult to segregate duties so that not one person does everything from receiving the cash, recording the cash, reconciling the cash, reporting the cash. Um, and it's not that you could have different people. It's just also limiting. Nobody else has the ability to do that as well. So it's a, it's a big hurdle. Um, probably ninety plus percent of all my governmental entities have that finding, so not uncommon.
I would guess in a, in a uh, municipality our size.
Yeah, yeah, very common. Yeah. Just something for you guys to be aware of. Um, when you do look at who's doing what, he can back me in mind, just was other better ways to do something to me. Instead of maybe a preventative control, is there a detective control that there's somebody looking over something and nobody's doing something from initiation to completion, but um, something that we're required to report to you. Um, the other finding we had was um, bank reconciliations were not done timely during the fiscal year under audit. I know the city's working to resolve that and get caught up and that'll be a good step in the right direction there. Um, and then also just having a disaster recovery plan, um, which we discussed with management. So and then there's some other compliance requirements um, related to Iowa municipalities. And those can be found on page sixty-five and our results to those, nothing um, in just there that I want to draw your attention to. So everything I talked about, if you look at page sixty, that's a summary of. So some financial highlights. If you looked at the communications letter, this is just our required communication that we have had in writing with with those sort of governments. So you all just have some required communications, nothing that you want to draw your attention to. You got to jump to pages ten through fifteen. Those are a little financial analysis. Um, the first chart on page ten is your general fund activity. It shows your receipts versus your dispersments versus your cash balance. Um, and it shows it for the last five years here. So you'll see that your your cash balance did drop from twenty-three to twenty-four by that seven hundred and fifty thousand that we talked about earlier. Um, and there's some narratives in those top three paragraphs above that chart kind of explaining what we see there. Any questions on that or further discussions? It was on page eleven, looks at the general fund receipts. Um, general fund receipts in twenty-four, there's twenty-three decreased approximately two percent. Uh, majority of that was just due to the art of funds that were received the prior years. That program is ended, so that's expected. Um, that's all I want to draw attention to there. Page twelve. Well, that's all I want to draw attention to there. Page twelve talks about your general fund dispersments. Dispersment overall increased from about three point four million to three point eight million. An increase of about three hundred eighty thousand. Um, mostly related to public safety increase due to our decent salaries due to the new uh union contracts. Uh, also some culture and integration. Um, dispersment's increased. And again, this is on a cash basis. So there's one you wrote the check. Um. It's not full of cool where you're saying these were all expenses that were incurred. It could just be timing of the payments too. So. Page thirteen, it's into your operating income for your enterprise funds. Um, so this is what we talked about on page, I think si- uh sixteen on the other report with proprietary funds, financial statements. This will show the last over the five years how water, sewer, storm sewer, landfill um performed income wise. Um. But just kind of lays that out to you and pulls that out of these seventy one pages and hopefully helps you to digest that a little more.
Why is the water negative but the sewer's not?
Just that's based on the fiscal year itself.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the income. So that's receipts, less the dis- or cash receipts, less dispersments. So you spent down cash in that fund.
Yeah.
Twenty four. You'll see. Yeah.
Some of it could just also be what they budgeted.
Yeah. And page fourteen shows the cash position on all those funds. So you'll see that the sewer fund um slowly declining in cash there. Um, water kind of hovers around the same. Storm sewer um slightly grows there and landfill kind of hovers around the same there. That's just showing the cash that runs the rule in the six thirty and each given year. So just a point in time. And then page fifteen just shows the capital projects fund, those funds that are restricted at six thirty uh twenty four. Three, almost three point seven million is restricted for future cap- capital projects. So that's why the bar is uh large in twenty four. Um. And then there's some other capital project funds that have um, a deficit. So need to figure out how to.
So we did do a transfer, I think, right when I got here to resolve some of those and the one that remains is the bike trail.
Yeah.
About three hundred and sixty thousand, I'm sure.
That always confused me.
Yeah, totally. Somewhere, I think.
Always made it.
There was always a city intent, I'm sure, to fund it and money never got transferred into that to wash it out is what I think happened. And now it's kind of hard to say. What are we doing? Where are we finding three hundred and sixty thousand to make that good?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Was that the last one? They run to the cemetery there? Were they tore the road out?
That would have been the last one.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
That's in you.
Yeah, it was over several years, but yeah, the cemetery.
But we did as well, I think, most of us. I think Dustin sent me a number of what they were and we were able to take some like, I think one was one of the street projects that never got zeroed out. So they had all these capital projects and then they would never say like, okay, it's done. Zero it out like wherever, you know, if it was partly sewer, partly water, partly street, whatever it is, like you need to zero those out and they would just sort of hover out there.
Mm hmm.
And so it's hard because all the capital projects are put together. So when someone, when you get a report that says it's five hundred thousand dollars in arrears or to a deficit, you have to go back to the auditors to say, all right, where does that five hundred get made up? And then you can try to make old each small chunk.
Yeah. So, like I said, this is a picture fifteen months ago. I know the city's made some steps in the right direction. So um. Look forward to the six thirty twenty five report and seeing things moving. Um, I know Lisa's doing what she can to dig it out and with Ash's help. So appreciate all that they do. It's a pleasure working on a thing for the audit. How we have the next audit scheduled in December, so you don't get too much of the break.
So I think, I think Dustin comes at Halloween time. So again, remember that like we didn't get our twenty three audit until February, March first, actually. So that was part of why we pushed to have private auditors. I think just their attention to timing is critical. And so now we'll have, if you look at like, they'll have the audit done in December. So in February, August and December, we will have three fiscal years in less than one twelve month period. Yeah.
So getting caught. I feel like it's a lot more detailed.
Yeah, so I was.
And I don't think the state auditors ever came to present.
No, and they never gave us anything like this. This is wonderful to have in this form.
This is really good.
That's a lot. So.
Yep.
He said, it's not a good hold of me if you have questions, does it? If you want to do that.
Are you excited when you go to work with your daddy?
Yeah. My dear.
Our special person.
You guys don't. No, I appreciate it.
Wow, that's very good.
I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. All right. Right, number eleven is discussion on the NACO position and the full-time laborer for cemetery and nuisance.
And you want to come up and then we can talk. Brad is here.
I didn't see him back there. He was.
Never met him.
I think this makes a lot of sense.
So if you remember when I first got here, there were conversations about the need for additional staff at the cemetery. And I, you know, Brad and I kind of got off to a a fault of a discussion that I felt like we needed to spend a little bit more time till when I was comfortable with it based on just being brand new and kind of that flux of what was happening. And so we paused on that. Um, and a year later, I think it's obvious that the cemetery has a couple of things coming. One is they need more staffing. Number two, we will have a retirement most likely in a year. Um, and they already are tight when it comes to the demands. It's obviously it's not like public safety, but it is certainly unique in the sense that like we don't get to control when people pass and when they need funerals and they have to be present. And so we'd like to, I think we now know, I can concur with what Brad knew then, that I'm comfortable saying that they need more staff. With that, I don't know that I could justify full time. And as you know, our main goal, one of our top goals was nuisance. And I think that what we've learned with having um Brad and the two chiefs kind of taking over in this interim before we advertise, um, is that we're succeeding because we have a lot more eyes on it. And I think what we've concluded is that there is not, we don't feel like there's a way for a person to be successful if they have to pay attention to the paperwork and be expected to go out and mow and do snow removal and things like that. And so because Brad, we have the advantage of Brad doing it now, did it before in his pre-cemetery life. You know, he's a great asset to us that can also be an asset to someone new that we would bring in for administrative duties that they would then coordinate with Brad. So Brad gets the advantage of having the extra body in the cemetery. But in return for having that extra body that may or may not fluctuate to always needing a full-time person that he would then to assign the work and coordinate with the person and be able to go out. So that's kind of the overall and maybe Brad, wherever you want to fill in.
I, I think you hit it. I it, it's kind of one of those things. I guess I wasn't wasn't remembering how overwhelming it can be with the nuisance side. Um, we are definitely behind people. I, I hate to admit that, but we're way further behind than I'd like to admit the city is. Um. It, it's going to take a process and, and I, I guess we've been trying to throw ideas to see what sticks. And I, I think we're just gonna, you know, we've got a weird year. You know, way too much mowing this time of year. Everything should be brown and, and off to a different world, but um, so we got a unique world this year, but I, I think having that full-time person that I can make sure is going particular directions totally away from whatever administrative position, that's, that's a whole nother discussion.
Mm hmm.
But uh, I, I don't think the way the city developed their plans that I was a part of one person can do both. I, I think if you want somebody going to court and doing some animal work and meeting and greeting people and having communications rather than everything being noticed and court cases and that, they don't have time for like. And, and so I, I do agree. I do agree with that. And that was on, on Lisa that, that put that through. Um. I, I didn't agree. And we kind of circle that a little bit, but it's, it's absolutely right. I mean, if we're going to have a person, if we fill that position and actually have a communicator that is out meeting people door to door, having the conversations and trying to get compliance rather than we just hammer everybody with fines and court cases and all that, that doesn't get us compliance. You need somebody that's pretty dedicated to, to that cause.
So I'm going to wrap my head around this. We're, we're talking about having a nuisance officer and an additional person to mow. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did. I, I think.
So it's like a person and a half.
No, I know. I totally get it. Cause I, I was thinking about this just yesterday. I do think that, that what we've put on our nuisance officer in the past has been a little bit uh
Actually seventeen years ago, I had seventy seven properties. I'm still out reading meters. You know, was expected to be in court cases and do all that, you know, and.
And chase dogs.
And, and do the. And uh, whatever the administrative side of it is now, you know, I'm removed. So I don't know exactly. I know the lots change with the magistrate and things that way. But i- it's still overwhelming, you know, and, and we have to be careful as a city that we when we develop that set of job skills with that person, that that's what they do.
And you know, the one thing that I'm really glad to hear a different solution to it because, you know, we've been doing the same thing over and over again, and we just end up in the same place a little bit. I'm just, I'm glad to see that we're, you know, trying to pursue a little different. No, same thing, but a little different aspect. So thanks for that. Appreciate it.
I think the scenario right now, while it's not fail proven perfect, we are trying to make up for some lost time. And some of that, as you do a lot of dorm life. We're talking to people. And trying to communicate what the city's expectations are rather than here's a, here's a letter, go do it. So.
People don't even know sometimes what a lot of means.
Well, and.
Or you're not standing with them and being like this right here.
Yep.
Like it seems simple, but.
Well, lifestyle, you know, what I see that is not in my lifestyle choices is somebody else's lifestyle choice, but that may not mesh up with our code.
Yeah.
So I, you know, we, we have to be able to communicate kind of where code needs to be for each particular property.
You know, we're kind of moving all in that direction. So as we, you know, one of our other agenda items is setting up the cleanup. So as we set that date now, that's a tool that these guys can have to be able to say, all right, if there's stuff like this and you want to be able to get rid of it with this program, here's what you have to do. Um, you know, we've talked about maybe part of our nuisance is some sort of a voucher program that if we can get people to say, yes, we can get rid of this stuff now that maybe they don't take as much advantage on the cleanup day, but we help them try to get stuff out to the transfer station like for some people, it's just their lives are debilitating and they just don't know what to do. And so somehow we have to help give people tools. You know, there's people that are willing to help some of the volunteers from the cleanup day. I think even if we could hook them up, you know, I think Justin's back there. Like he talked about trying to be helpful to us. And if there was a place that we could connect somebody, even if it's not right, you know, on the cleanup day, like I think we have to be thinking differently and thinking outside of the box. You know, we had a situation where you know, we're, we're just trying to get, I hunted someone down from Alaska that like their taxable goes to Alaska. I just started Googling the hack out of the person yesterday and he called me today. I hooked him up with a landscaping firm and it's done.
Mm hmm.
Like his, he lives in Alaska, his kid lives here, the kid gets called off of work.
But that was a lot of your time.
Yeah, but at least like our goal is to get it off of our job, you know, like, and, and we emphasize like you don't want us to come because we are going to gouge you because, and I said to the orms today, like we want you to be mowing. We don't want to compete with you. And if we charge the same as you or something fun like a nice cheap warm fuzzy number, then they might as well just let us do it. And we don't want to do it.
Okay.
And hopefully like selling these lots, that's also on the agenda. Like I feel like we're moving in the direction that hopefully it's manageable so that, you know, whatever Brad's got to do to get it done with his crew, if you approve this next meeting, it's great, but our goal is to wean ourselves off of these things and create an expectation that this is the norm, not we just say something and then we let it go.
Right.
And that really is the biggest thing is follow through.
Yeah.
So I might just draw out some numbers if that's okay.
Yes.
Um, so we're, we, we're just a month that the four of us have been trying to tackle. Uh, we're at like seventy one door hanger notices in, in the month's time. Uh, we're seeing about sixty percent, sixty five percent compliance by owners or occupants. Uh, some of that is a little jaded because you got neighbors that would be in line, you know.
I'll just help.
I'm, I'm just going to take care of. So. But literally you go up and you have this property and it's pretty much it's.
And people come out of the woodwork when they're standing in the neighborhood.
Oh, I bet.
Which is part of the like being present. And so if the person has to go mow like the short time that we had someone this spring, like he would be gone for a whole day mowing. So if he's gone for a whole day mowing, he's not doing the stuff to keep everything else going. So then you're just like further behind and then you mow and further behind and then you go shovel it.
Yeah.
Like it just, it's not, it's just not working.
Yeah.
So our goal for tonight was to let you think about it. I feel like it's, you know, it is a decision that you need to make, but as we keep thinking about the eight things, you know, we had four goals and there was two goals under each of those. And a lot of the things that we're talking about tonight are really just trying to keep moving in that direction of like, we can't do everything all the time, but these, this is important. And if we're going to say nuisance and cleanup and property maintenance is important, then we have to put our efforts and our dollars towards it.
It makes sense to me.
The goal would be if you don't have any questions, that we would vote on it in two weeks.
Okay.
And let us know if you have any extra information that you want for that.
Okay, thank you for being here.
Thanks, Chris Brad.
Next item.
Um.
Is you asking?
Can I make a quick question? I don't know if it's too late to do this, but since Jeff is here and he's not until nineteen, after this next, after eleven, can we move nineteen up?
Mm hmm.
Does anyone have a problem with that? So that you don't have to sit here the whole rest of your night. I should have, I should have caught it before now, Jeff. I'm sorry. All right, go ahead. This is number, um, number twelve is resolution twenty twenty five dash ninety nine. This is a purchase of a John Deere twenty twenty three Gator X U B five nine O M for twelve thousand dollars. We're getting a three thousand dollar discount off of the fifteen thousand dollar.
Right. So this kind of came up. Again, we're trying to put tools in the toolbox so that people can effectively like we can't constantly buy forty thousand dollar trucks, but people need to be able to separate and go their own ways. And we feel like this is, and sometimes you're trying to get into people's backyards and you can't take all your tools along with you. And so, um. Clint and Brad did the research on the equipment. We decided to put it on here. We feel like it's a reasonable um compromise to having a tool to be able to carry stuff with it, whether it's nuisance properties, things that they need to do in the cemetery. Uh, we feel like the levy is something that, is it levy inspections that they, you know, again, are supposed to be driving vehicles out there. So we did a three-pronged approach to how it would get paid for and it would be um water, storm, and then the general fund would be from the remaining levy dollars. It's only four thousand that would come out of there, but that was our our goal. We hadn't talked about that. Everybody obviously has a little bit of equipment money in their budgets. So this we thought was a good, um, I think it would stay housed at Brad's facility and then as Clint weans it, they'll go grab it.
Got a heated cab?
No, not going that way.
I don't, I don't understand why not. Cause if you wanted to put a plow on it, it'd be usable for doing that stuff too. I, I really recommend it. If we're going to buy one, I think we need one to heat a cab.
I, I'm, I'm on the same page with you. I, I'm going to think why we go with a bobcat that we can add.
I don't care what land we get.
But that can have attachments that we can put onto it, make it a little more usable for.
But it's only spent twelve, Brad. Why not spend thirteen, five and get a heated cab and make it a lot more versatile?
Yeah, I, I think you're looking at way more than.
I'm not sure. I, I mean, Justin shaking his head. You, you probably know better than anybody.
Yeah.
How much for heating cab?
I don't know. Yeah, it quite depends on the source or what.
Yeah.
It depends.
So I'll, I'll speak on, on the wide of why, why we looked at it. So obviously the cemetery that used to keep in place.
You're used to a nineteen seventy eight truck with no windshield. We're totally spoiling them.
We did grab the plow that was here at the fire department. So we are, I'm hoping to that when they got rid of their unit.
Mm hmm.
We are looking for these nuisance properties to try and do some snow removal and stuff on them as we need to with it.
Mm hmm.
Um, we just, I guess we're out in the elements all the time and.
You can use it to plow without heat.
Yes, absolutely.
Bundled up.
I, I just think for another ten thousand plus, it's.
I, I would be really surprised if it's ten grand. I, you know, before we make a motion on this, I would really like to see the cost of having a heat. I, I would be really surprised if it's ten grand. I, you know, before we make a motion on this, I would really like to see the cost of having a heater. Just so we can compare them, because once again, I feel like if we're gonna do it, let's do it.
I would say if you wanna do that, then give us a number that you're willing to spend and then.
I, I have no idea what it costs, but I can't imagine it being a huge, uh, upgrade for just, we're not talking about heat and air, we're just talking about heat.
But is this thing enclosed?
It'd have to be.
Yeah, I have.
Right now, the unit that we have is not.
So they throw windshield and the doors on. And you know, they just drop on.
Uh, I think it'd be beneficial to have a cab, especially if it's gonna be used for snow.
You know, once again, it just makes the piece of equipment, the tool you're putting in your toolbox more versatile. I just, I would like to see the numbers personally.
Yeah. I'm with you on that.
Tim's looking at it.
We're not getting a number. It's gonna be a. It's gonna be a.
You know, we have Google at our fingertips.
That's right.
Is it, is it through agrivision?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean.
There's other calls that you have.
Two that they.
Uh, is it, they got these two units and then they had another unit that was one of the fair units that's. Uh, it was, yeah, twenty, twenty-some odd thousand.
There was one that was just a little bit more, but wasn't that just a bigger engine or nothing? We didn't think we need.
I think you guys need one. I thought you, you know, I thought we should have had one a long time ago, but I, once again, I really feel like we should, you know.
Well, we had, we had a hand-me-down that was donated to the city. That's what we're treating. That was donated from a private.
That was like a year ago, I think.
We had it more than a year, right?
Yeah, a year.
So basically what needs to happen is we need a re- a, a motion to either approve or disapprove.
Well, I wouldn't disapprove if you're not, we can table that, if there's, otherwise I would say, so that we can proceed.
Well, yeah, I wanna proceed with it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna slow it down, but at the same time.
But then you'd have to say you can spend up to twenty, or what do you wanna spend? If we could get heated, whatever, for twenty, and if not, come back. Or, I, I don't know. I mean, we don't feel like, you really don't feel like we need it.
I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I understand.
Would it push snow in the cemetery if it were heated? I mean.
Uh, you know, the, the scenario on.
And the trail?
Is operator comfort. I, I mean, that's what you're talking about, the heated, it doesn't have anything to do with being able to use it, so.
I mean, if you snow blow, you're not bundled up.
Yeah, I, I don't know. How will that affect the, the operating funds, funds and water storms to the budget?
I mean, those.
Where are you going? Okay, so I'm just saying, is it?
I would just put a max and then we can report that.
You know, I don't, I don't think I'd be willing to go twenty grand for it, but I don't, I don't see why we couldn't go up to fifteen grand if we can get one with a heated cab, but I don't know if that's even possible.
Can you see?
Justin, you're smiling.
And it's hard, door, door to four grand.
It's hard to find.
That's, that was like three years ago.
How much?
Eight, that was four of them.
Four extra thousand to put on door, you would guess.
Dealers, so you're not gonna see pricing online.
I'm, I'm on that too. It's hard to tell. I don't know, I just wanna get the most bang for the buck, Brad. I definitely want you guys to have the machine. I don't wanna slow the process down, so.
But I think what you're proposing, what he's saying is, your proposal doesn't change the work that we do. It just makes people more comfortable in the work they're doing that they're not.
Absolutely, and it makes it so you can go out there with twenty blow and, you know, push stuff around.
I mean, if.
You still go out.
You know, I, I just, I don't know, I don't know.
Someone make a motion, cuz then everybody else can decide whether they're gonna vote for it or not.
I'd like to hear from some other council members, Janice.
Well. I mean, it's what you said, it's comfort, but. I mean, the stuff you wear is so much better than, you know, ten years ago per se. I mean, I, I used to be out all the time in that cold, and it, you just. It's thirty below, you're probably not gonna go out and do it anyway.
Well, you know, we, we take tractor out and, you know, open the sidewalks for school or. Uh, you know, I mean, we've got our responsibilities, you know.
I don't, I don't think we shut down when it's cold.
So.
No.
But we're talking about small portion of being used for snow removal.
Yeah.
It's just very, that's gonna be very small. So I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'm gonna go back on, I'm just, now we're, if we're just focusing on snow removal. I don't know if we need the, if it's just to use as a tool to get to backyards, to help clean up, move brush, we don't need a cab. Correct?
Not enclosed.
Not enclosed.
But in my opinion, then it's just, then it's a summertime tool, no use in the wintertime.
What are they?
Or anything.
It's a safety catch door.
Justin.
They have the door.
They all have a door now because of the.
Jump in and out.
Oh, I don't know.
It's, so.
No, they don't.
So, how often do you use the Gator for snow removal?
We've never.
Okay.
The plan is to try and get a connection though from this fire department old.
Get a cab without a heater and still sit in there longer.
With a heater?
With, you can get a cab without a heater and sit in this cold for twelve hours. Because you're not getting hit in the face and the sides with the wind and still operate that.
So my two cents is, you need to pick a number that you're willing to live with. We will investigate, and if we can get it within that number, we will. Try to upgrade it, and if not, we're gonna get this, is my two cents. So if you wanna spend fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I think we're saying we're okay with what. Like, we're all used to you go out. It doesn't really matter when you work for the public, how cold it is, you get your work done.
I just see snow removal as a small part of it, so.
And what?
I, I'm given the proposal, so. I, I move to approve a, a gender item of twelve, purchase of a John Deere Gator.
As is, no extra dollars.
As proposed.
As proposed, second.
Okay, so, Hebrink and Fredo, now further discussion?
You don't wanna take that up to like fifteen, sixteen, so they can see what the options are, and still give them the option to do that if it's available?
If you're, if I'm, uh, I, I've listened to you, and I respect everything you said, but we're just talking about snow removal, and that's a small part of it.
Well, I'm not talking about just snow removal, but if, if it's an open cab, you know, and, and I get that everybody's, you know, might have their bibs and their, uh, you know, their stocking hats, but. It's gonna make it a, basically a, a fair weather tool. It's not gonna be a foul weather tool. It's not gonna be good in the rain, it's not gonna be good in the snow, it's not gonna be good in the cold. If it has a cab, you know, and, you know, I heard Mr. Freidoff say, well, you've gotta get in and out of the doors. That the doors can be removed in the summertime when, when it's hot out, you know, you put the doors on when it's cold and it's inclement, so.
I, I think we're gonna be fine with that, yeah.
Okay, I will take a roll call. Right off.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Hebrink.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
And then you better guess anyway.
Well, I mean, just because I, you know, that language, I differ doesn't.
I, I, I agree with you, but after just, I, if we're just, small amount of time.
Okay.
I, I think we might regret that in the future though.
Possibly, yeah.
All right.
By that time, we'll be behind a new one.
So, so, let me ask Brad one more question. Brad. If, if, if in fact you buy this with no cab, will you be able to upgrade it to, with those specs later on down the road? Okay, very good. That's all, that, that, that makes me feel better. So you can upgrade it later on down the road.
Do I need to have a mo- move nineteen up? Or I'm just, I'm just moving nineteen up? So number nineteen is resolution twenty-two-five dash ninety-six. It's a Snyder and Associates agreement for engineering of the wastewater. Treatment plant reconstruction. And so we did a search grant, and we've done another extended study then.
You know, we did a facility plan.
Yes.
I don't remember exactly which month, but some time ago, and I came and gave you some options and made some.
Been two years.
Um, yeah, it took a while on.
Yeah.
And, um, we, you know, we talked through some choices and we have, um, we've submitted that facility plan to both USDA and Iowa D N R. They both have approved the plan.
Excellent.
USDA is now working with you on, um, application for funding. So I wanted to check with them today to see what status that is in. And I was able to learn that, um, it will not be funded with fiscal year twenty-twenty-five money. So the new fiscal year starts October one, but they don't get the money on October one. Congress has to pass a budget and everything and get that out to the states. And so, um. Best guess would be that we're probably looking at a letter of conditions coming to you, offering a funding package. Somewhere around February to March of twenty-twenty-six. Okay, so the choice you have would be to wait until then, and then hire your engineer, us to design your new wastewater facility. Or, um, USDA said there's no problem at all if you choose to go ahead and have a start now. Um, get ahead of the game a little bit on the design process. Now, um, just to be transparent, it's gonna be some of our engineers in Antony that are working on that design, not us in Atlantic. And in fact, um, I'm mostly retired now. I came down because everyone else was busy, but, um. It just, I guess the, if you want us to, to get started and get that ball rolling, keep that ball rolling, we can certainly do that. So I, I understand they've had some meetings with your staff and with Clint, your wastewater guy, and, um. You know, everyone is pretty much in agreement that the services agreement they put together is just for the. Upgrades at the treatment plant to an S V R type treatment system. Does not include the lining. Or the lift station, which are in the report. So when you get your funding letter, likely those will be also included in your total funding package. We can easily amend this agreement at that time to add those. Uh, but they chose, right now, they felt like, I think, the people that have been talking to you felt like your main concern right now was the treatment plant itself.
Talking about a lift station on the creek?
The lift station west of the river is the one that needs some.
Some sewage lift station.
Yes.
Okay.
Not strong.
Not a creek lift.
Yeah, not the flood, it's for the sewage.
Okay.
So basically, they're reporting back to the original study that we did. Which the, the, the second study really shows that if we're gonna grow it all, we've gotta change.
Yeah.
So.
Right, and so, so I think, you know, you probably all remember those things. Um, one of the things you're probably gonna wanna do, uh, which we could end up with, once you hire us is. S D A, the way their funding works, um, whatever portion of that funding package is loan, you do that first. And you get a local lender to give you like a construction loan, um, to pay the monthly bills to your contractor. Um, once they hit the end of their loan, then they close that loan, and that would also pay off the zero percent P and D loan at that time. And then any grant money that you may or may not get would be at the end. Now, since there's no budget passed for next year yet, they said we have no clue where we're at with grants. So you have, I just wanted to be transparent about that. You know, we hope we get a really nice grant for you, but they, they can't say, you're the other today.
So that, that said, when, when you're saying that, so in my brain, I'm thinking, we still need the, the treatment plant. Whether or not we get the grant money or not, and the planning has to be done, so.
We could lose the skate any day, right?
So.
The point is you don't wanna delay, like, we can't not do it, so we wanna continue to progress so that when the time comes, we're more.
But does it, does it help us to continue with the process for the funding and?
I really think so right now. Uh, you're gonna get a funding package, and they're gonna make an offer irregardless of what we do.
I see.
With our work. USDA told me it's no problem for us to get started now. We don't have to wait for them. Um.
We just don't know what that funding package looks like.
Exactly.
Well, it's a loan versus grant number is the key.
So, so right now, um, their interest rates are in the low fours, like four and an eighth, I think, right now. Um, that changes quarterly, and so you're, you know, we're talking like three quarters from now, so it's gonna change a little bit. Um, that's usually a forty-year loan, you know, you can pay it off early with no penalty if you choose. But, um, a lot of times with low interest, it's better just to go ride, use your money somewhere else. But, um. You know, it's really your, like we've said before, it's your project, and we wanna do what you want us to do. So, you know, if you. This design process, just to give you an idea, likely will take somewhere around a year and a half, and with permitting, that could even grow to two years. So we're probably looking at bidding in the spring of twenty-seven, at the earliest. And it might be late twenty-seven. And that suggests you can start now. If you wait until you get your funding next spring, then that pushes all that to twenty-eight.
So when we get funding, so let's say we do get funding next fiscal year, is there gonna be a time, uh, frame where we have to have that money spent?
Usually, uh, with USDA, once you accept the offer, you have five years, and. If you're in the middle of construction and, you know, there's weather delays or whatever, they're gonna work with you on that.
Yeah. But it would behoove us to have a plan in place.
I would recommend.
I agree.
Take a motion.
So I did bring along two copies. Um, it's a lot of paper, and that's because USDA requires that we use their contract paperwork for our agreement review. And so this is what you would be approving, is this agreement between the owner and the engineer for professional services. Like I said, two copies, so there, I can leave those, you can return one to us, keep one for yourself if you. You know, when you approve that.
Anybody have any other questions for Jeff? Ollie's here.
Clint and I would both describe that it's best to proceed.
Yeah. Yep. I said.
Well, we've been talking about this for a number of years, and, and we, we, well, and we know that we need to do something, so.
So it's one of our first things out of the gate.
I will, I will move that we go ahead and proceed with the, uh, engineering with Snyder Associates.
Okay. And I will second. Bills and Bradley, any further discussion?
We'll call.
Lester, yes. Hebrink.
Yes.
Bradley, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Right off.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
You know, what are we already in anything?
Yes, have a safe trip back and enjoy retirement.
All along, well.
It's been a pleasure working with you. Okay, now back to number thirteen. It says ordinance twenty-two-five dash twelve. This is the additional stop signs. And this is the second of three readings. I swore this was the third of three. This is the second of three readings.
Like the third domain.
It feels like it, but Coolba, I think we talked about it the first week, and then we did a first. So this is Coolba and Highland Streets. This is at a southbound on Highland and eastbound on two for a four-way. And then Miller and Reed Streets, this is add one southbound on Miller. And since we're going to be updating ordinances, if we look at the others.
The next time around.
Those others we'll look at to put in this ordinance change too.
We did.
We did, we, those were included with this, and there was just, again, a number of them that got missed when it was updated last time.
I remember doing.
I would think to maybe have that on for the next time, so we can just continue to get those corrected.
Get this ordinance.
Yep.
Put in place, sounds good.
No, I will move to approve the second reading.
Right off.
I'll second.
And Lester, any further discussion? Roll call. Hebrink.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Number fourteen is update on Highway forty-eight bridge reconstruction, and I was a little confused by this. This is, this is the one that's out west?
South?
South.
South. This picture is not ours, right? This picture is not.
No, that's not our.
I was like. Give me an example of what it would have looked like if I had an interstate.
I'm just Broadway.
This is Washington and Broadway, right?
Okay, no, yes, yeah.
Got it. I just.
But now I get it. Interstate.
Yeah.
Maybe those proposed plans.
Actually, good, good save.
Yes, right?
What's the bridge gonna look like?
Right now, they just have a chain like there.
Yeah, I think they use it so much nicer.
I definitely agree. Upon myself that there was no dollar investment, that I made the executive decision without.
Are they, are, are those, uh, gates powder coated and everything, that they're not, paint's not gonna fill, and we're not gonna have to?
Yeah, I don't believe that there's maintenance.
Yeah, this would be much better.
Yes, it looks. I said, is there anything attractive? And they said, oh, well, back when we checked. City administrator said that they didn't need any aesthetically pleasing stuff. I was like, oh, no, I changed my mind. I changed the.
Even though it wasn't gonna cost anything, huh? It looked so nicer instead of getting a channel like that.
It'll look nice. Some, some. So nothing you need us to do other than.
There was no cost, so I just decided, yes, for somebody.
See, I'm excited.
I think you know it.
It will look.
Are they still able to do them?
It is. That will look nice. All right, number fifteen is resolution twenty-two-five dash one hundred. Approval of the fall cleanup day set for Saturday, October fourth, from eight to three. We're gonna consolidate it all into one day instead of two.
And we're gonna see how it goes. You know, it might be like, it's a little bit crazier, and, you know, there's no way to know if like. We did such a great job, but now more people come, or we got rid of a lot of stuff in June and less people need to come, like, there's just no way to predict, but. Um, on that day, we have confirmed that Shenandoah can be there again to assist. We have confirmed that the recycling company can be there. The tires are really just a pickup day, so I'm not worried about them. You know, we'll try to get them on Monday, but there's nothing. At the fair, like how the fair was coming last time, that we needed to get rid of them right away. Uh, the fair board has given us the okay to use their facility again. You know, we thought about a lot of other options if they didn't want us to come back, and that just is not as good of an option for all the car storage and just.
Just the way.
Just worked really well.
Yes, it worked well. Yes, it worked well.
Um, we, I do have the report here that it, that the cost of out-of-pocket expense and staff. Was this just under forty thousand dollars at the thirty-nine thousand. Again, we'll have to see. I, my suggestion is, is that we leave the four dollars, we talked about revisiting in, in a year, but I think. You know, if we're gonna stick with two of them. Then we probably have the ability at that year point, or at least after October, to maybe consider going down to something like three dollars. Um, I wouldn't do it yet, because again, we just don't know if like this picks up steam, if eventually we sort of level off. Uh, but I definitely don't think that the four dollars would ever need to be more for some amount of time, so I think we're at a minimum comfortable. It'd be great to say we're gonna lower it, I think we can at least tell the people that like, there's a possibility of that. Um. But it, it, it just, you don't know.
For all you hauled off, and for all the good that was done, there's still a lot more to be hauled off.
That's what I'm saying, and, and. And if we ever wanted to go to like three, then we don't have too much money, so it's. I think we sort of have to stick along, but at least letting people know like. We will figure out how to make it work at the four dollars, there's no reason to go up, and after we see how much the second one is, we could talk about the potential of lowering it, maybe. I just wouldn't do it yet.
And then you mentioned in here doing some somewhat limited curbside pickup the week prior. For, for.
So some of the volunteers, I know Justin's here, he, you know, did a lot of the volunteer work, I've talked to Robert McMahon, who helped us, and then I met with John Gross this morning. They're all willing to help again. Um, you know, it's a, it's a challenging thing, like, this is supposed to be for people in need. Right, like genuinely, you don't have a truck, you're not a muscle person that can lift stuff. That's not how everybody was, but it feels super uncomfortable when you're calling and be like, oh, what's your excuse? Like, may I see your oldness, like, I mean, it, it just doesn't, like, we know there were very able-bodied people. That could have gotten their own stuff there, so how we balance trying to say, look, like, we have a limited number of spots. And why can't you get it there yourself, you know, what's your story kind of thing, and like. I don't know, it seems a little weird, but I think we have to do a little bit of that. What we also talked about is instead of bringing, can, you know, bringing those loads down to the. Facility that we're having at the fairgrounds, in the middle of all the citizens, especially when it's one day. We talked about that maybe they have to have their stuff out like Monday night. And that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, our volunteers could go and pick stuff up. Whether they go, if it's a really gross load, they go straight out to the transfer station, and we have an agreement that they have a voucher and we get billed for that. Uh, whether we put a couple dumpsters down at the shop. That, you know, are not meant to be for the public, but that the volunteers come there, so we kinda wanna talk through that, but I think. You know, we're not gonna probably make people be home, and it has to be out at the curb, cause if it's at the curb and, you know, there might be scrappers that come around. And take stuff, cause there definitely were things thrown away that. I think you said.
And I, I feel like we do fall off sides, that we will have people from out top coming and pick up junk.
But I, I don't see anything wrong with asking people their reason for need to, to do the pick.
And we might just have to say, like, there were people that could have done this themselves.
Oh, for sure.
That didn't last time, and so we're sorry if you feel this is invasive, but we need to ask you what your.
The, and I, some people don't have trailers. But they can just get to the curb. That's the battle right there, just getting it to the curb.
You know, and hopefully with us being more, you know, like. There was a house in my neighborhood that like their garbage just kept accumulating and accumulating, and finally we were like, enough, and like. I thought they were just hiring a hauler to like come one time, and then the second week, I could see it over my house, I was like, hallelujah, they actually have the garbage every week, so. Again, the more aggressive that we are about everything, hopefully. Um, but I think we want to know that the date is picked, we can start advertising, that's a six weeks advertisement window. You know, last time we did quite a bit on the radio, we had the movie theater that had a screen up there for a couple weeks. Um, obviously in the paper and Facebook, so.
You know what I would like to see that other cities have done, are more public service announcements about what we expect of the citizens. Not just a one-time, you know.
Throughout the year.
Just throughout the year, maybe one or two a week, just to remind people that this is what's important in our community, and we're trying to clean it up, and. I just think it's important that the city should do that. And I've had other citizens come to me and say.
Well, even just the grass, like, how do you not know that your grass looks like?
But just a public service announcement, put it out there and say, this is what we expect of you as citizens and, you know.
Yeah.
I don't read the paper and I don't listen to the radio.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. I know that, but, you know, if we make it. There you go. Faces, where we can put something there that we're doing, and now we're cleaning up it, I just think it's important.
Yep. Sounds good, can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Lester?
Yeah.
I'll say that.
Hebrink? Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Number sixteen is resolution twenty twenty-five dash one oh one, this is the approval to grant a temporary easement. For one hundred West Market Street. And I just have to say, you know, this again is an example of, Lisa does go out of her way to try to find. A right middle solution for people and for things, and this is just one of them. And I had mentioned, like, in Nebraska, they do easements, and you've got an easement because you built your deck on city property. And then if, when you go to sell it, you have to defer that, like, so it's kinda like that, I think. So hopefully this way, Dan will be able to sell the property, and hopefully. The next person will take the building down, but if they don't, when they go to sell it again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be recorded.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna compromise my feel strongly that we shouldn't sell right away, but I also feel like, what the heck? This building's been there forever.
Forever.
So Bree and I discussed it, Bree is comfortable with it from a legal perspective. They will have to draft up the language for the easement at their expense. To describe the area, they'll have to pay for a little bit of my time and Bree's time to review it. And then obviously to record it themselves, so you approving this means I can just proceed with that, and then again, I talked to Dan on Friday. Um, he asked me if he should be here.
He's not.
Um, so then it's on them, like, this is our offer, if the buyer still is not comfortable with that, then it's on you, figure out how to move your building or take it down, but this to me feels.
I think it's a very comprehensive.
Yeah, I think it's great too, but let me just ask this question, what's the downside to us granting a temporary easement to this? Is there any downside to it at all?
Been there all these years.
We're not gonna grant it to everybody.
No, I, I understand, but I just ask if there's a downside to it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just saying, like, if you screw up, then I guess we'll give you permission to stay on our property, but this is old.
This is old.
It's a special circumstance.
It's a very.
No, no, I, I, I'm all for doing this, I, I'm.
To me, like, if this was a new thing, like, I think what we're trying to say, and we'll call precedential setting, is like, if you go screw up now, you will remove it.
Yes.
Like, this doesn't give everybody free rent.
So this, this, this temporary easement is revocable at any time.
Well, no, I mean, I think we're saying as long as the building stays, like, if there's a fire, if there's a tornado, if you're doing any sort of major.
Can't rebuild it.
No, you cannot.
And then the, the city's lines will go back into effect, correct?
The lines are into.
The lines, it doesn't change the line, that's what we're saying, she's saying it doesn't change any property lines, just saying, we're gonna allow it.
And like I say, the new owners might decide to tear it down anyhow, so.
Well, they just can't build onto it at all.
No, that's.
They're in some real big trouble down where, or they take it down.
Or even next to it, because that would mean that new structure would be on.
Well, that, the way I'm reading this, if they were to bring in like a shed, put next to there, they're, they cannot do that.
Well, they can do it on their own property if it's compliant with the. And not attached to it.
But not.
Cause they can't expand it even on their own, if they wanted to put something.
Where that shed is at, where the, they built.
Well, there's.
They could put it on the side of there, but they put it on the side of there.
So I thought that was a portable building, but Av and I drove down by there, the player got many pounds of concrete in there.
I feel like we had this discussion of planning and zoning this morning. There's no such thing as a portable building unless you're bringing a pop-up tent that's a ten by ten to the farmer's market. People think that you don't need a building permit for a portable building. If you can't lift it with your hands, it's not portable.
Yeah.
Good definition, new definition right there.
Cause it's legal, we don't say it's not legal, but you have to get something.
It's true, so because now we have waiting to shoot.
I'm gonna move to approve this easement.
Thank you, all right, I got it first by Bills.
Second.
By Frydoff, any further discussion? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Number seventeen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-eight. This is to set the public hearing date for the disposal of twelve city lots of retail estate or retail. I'm sorry, real estate, real estate, retail, real estate.
And it's fourteen lots and twelve sales, cause there's two combos.
Got it, so it's fourteen lots and twelve sales. And we do have to hold four, there are twelve public hearings next time, so we have to hold a public hearing for each.
It'll just be the mayor opening each one.
I'll just open.
And there'll be a time for each, it'll be, you know, I'm assuming no one's gonna come.
Oh, why?
Bree said they all have to be separate actions.
Just open and close.
Open and close.
And there's no motions, it'll just be the mayor, I'll say open, and if there's no comments, and she'll say, close it, open the next one, but there does have to be, well.
And I'm, I'm, our new nuisance typing that we're doing, I'm excited about that, cause I feel like we can follow up with. Are you doing what you said, or are you not, and has previously?
I've talked to all these people, I'm like.
Yeah.
The hearing is on September second, I intend for the council to most likely go on it, I'm gonna have reworking over the next two weeks. So that we can get the quick claim deeds recorded, like, three, four, or five of September. I've said, everybody has to be ready to start mowing, then, you know, most of the people live in that general area. Um, there are a couple that, uh, like, the ones that would like to consider maybe mini storages. That would have to be rezoned, but it would not be spot zoning, because it's R two next to M one, like, the other side of the tracks is M one. So I did explain to them, like, you know, it's not like you're all surrounded by residential, and then I'd say, you're not gonna get that, cause it would be spot zoning. Um, a few of them, there would be floodplain considerations, I've explained to everyone, we have a lot of free dirt that we would love to get rid of. Uh, and then we'd have to look at elevation, so I already have like Jason Con from the DNR looking at a couple of those lots. Explained, you know, making sure that even if for some reason that's a process, that people understand that and still wanna take it.
Right.
Uh, there's one that's kind of had some nuisance issues, I couldn't get ahold of him, I sent the chief over to his house, then he called me, we talked, I said, look, like, you know, this can't be a. New storage facility for you, more junk. So we expect you to keep it up. Um, so I think, you know, in most, probably two-thirds of them, it'll just be someone else taking over, back on the tax roll, and us having to maintain it. And then there is some potential, and then again, I think. A lot of these in the past were super low prices, but the good news is, is that collectively, the dollars add up to over twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's positive to helping.
Yeah, I agree.
Keep going with the cause, you know, and it's nothing outrageous, I think, as you can see, the highest one is five thousand, the lowest one is five hundred.
So if they don't comply, or use, um, general use that we require, do we take the lot back?
I don't, I think when you were in the mode of taking things back, you were selling properties that needed to be demoed. Or they needed to be fixed.
Yes.
These are all vacant lots, so I don't think that there's a pullback clause.
Yeah.
No. I mean, if they don't build their garage on it, they're gonna be mowing the lawn, it's gonna become a green space anyway.
Yeah, and none of these were like, somebody else gave more money and we picked somebody because of a garage, so that's why we're justifying taking this. Thankfully, all the highest bidders were equally or better proposals, there was no like conflict of. We're taking four thousand less, cause you said you're gonna do this. There was none of that.
Okay, good, okay.
On that note, we're all done to approve that resolution.
Lester?
Hardly wait for all of those.
I'll second. Lester and Bradley? Roll call agrees. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Number eighteen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-five. This is a maintenance agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. For Highway thirty-four mowing that we probably should have had for many years.
Yes, you should.
This is one of these things that Brad and his team have been responsible for, and it is a lot of work.
I saw Brad out mowing it yesterday.
But I didn't realize that we needed an agreement for it.
I don't think anybody did it on purpose.
Makes sense, yes, makes sense.
In all of our conversations for cleanups, and are you guys gonna mow this, or how steep it is, they were like, oh, well, if you'd like to mow it, you'll have a maintenance agreement. And everybody kinda looked at each other like, oh, okay, so I've made that request, I have the documents, I can fill it out, but I thought, well. The council should concur that we do want the option to mow more often than twice a year than they would.
Cause the DOT only mows that whole corridor twice a year.
Twice a year.
But we mow it weekly, have been.
Yeah, and it looks nice.
And it looks nice.
Right by our trail and stuff there, entryway to town.
Yeah. Okay, so take a motion.
I will also.
Go ahead.
I will also be meeting with them, I, I feel like there's all this angst about crosswalks and how people safely cross, and so. I have a meeting scheduled with them in September with the staff and myself and the DOT. To at least understand why you were told no, and what it takes, because the number one thing is, there's no place to send people with sidewalks, and so. You can, you can say it's unsafe, but if I were to say, all right, you have to have. Sidewalks that go, you know, more than ten feet off of there, then at least you understand. And if people really think it's unsafe, are you willing to put your money where your mouth is, cause it's not just about a crosswalk. So I wanna understand, because it was all before everybody's time, so we're having a meeting to discuss that with them, that's why.
And also bring up, if we're gonna go through with this, ask them when they're gonna start picking up their little hay barriers. The little hay logs down there too, that are, have to be weed-whipped and mowed around.
Do you have to do that by the? That's the reason you know, Mark.
Yes.
I'm not sure if there's, if it's, I think they have to wait until a certain amount, is the grass completely?
Just growing in there, but I, I mean.
I know they're coming back in the fall also that, um, so the northeast corner of forty-eight and thirty-four. Uh, they're also gonna cut back all that brush, it's like, when you're coming westbound, and then you look to the north. Scrubbing of trees to, speakers being moved today. Um. That they have agreed to do, and I also asked about, there was a delay in the stop and go lights at the intersection that was. Additional trenching, so they are progressing, but obviously that'll eventually be done.
Who are you meeting with? With DOT, do you know, is it gonna be like accessibility guy?
It's gonna be our head guy that we're dealing with.
The project engineer on this project down there.
Has nothing to do with this project, it's.
It's, it's our regional guy.
I see.
Guys.
I see, I just, I just, I, I had a conversation once with a guy that was the accessibility rep for I-DOT, but. I never, he never got back with me, I just wondered if he was one of the people you were dealing with or not.
I don't, I just.
One thing I would also suggest is, because we're doing a survey right now on the Safe Streets for All. You can type all of that in there about the crosswalks and the safety issue as part of that survey. So it's on my mayor's Facebook page, but go and take the survey. And list out those things that you feel are an issue, and this crosswalk be one of them, so. I guess I could.
Still on the maintenance.
Yes.
Yes.
We approve that, please, but thank you.
I'll say that.
And Hebrink?
Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Hebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number twenty is resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-seven, this is the JEO agreement for engineering on the flood resiliency. Evaluation and plan, basically, we did this in twenty eighteen, we've had them review it with us, but it needs to be updated with the right numbers. Calculated in, and just looking at other things we've got going, probably. So the cost to update that plan is forty-six thousand five hundred.
So, and it's also, you know, we talk about this pump.
Yes.
But nobody really knows what that means, you just have talked about it, and when I asked the question, like, well, what does that really mean, like. No one has truly analyzed what it means and the cost.
And with my mayor's design workshop, they're saying we don't need pump, we do these other things.
There was, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure that when McClure and Associates were here, I'm pretty sure that Pete Crawford did a study, I'm pretty sure there were numbers done on that lift station down there on the creek, that's what you're talking about.
I don't know what you mean by a lift station.
So when you closed, when you closed the floodgates on. So when you close the, when you close the floodgates on the niche, you can get the Red Oak Creek over the levy into the river. Instead of backing up into town and flooding flooding town. Cause that's what happens now when the red, when the niche reaches flood level, they close the floodgates. And then the Red Oak Creek has nowhere to go except in town.
So the pump.
That's, well, they call it a lift station.
I've never heard anybody call it that, but. That seems odd to me. I haven't heard the word lift station. Does that usually mean sanitary in my brain? But anyway.
They're lifting it over the.
Right.
But this is just to take the current plan that we had done in twenty, it was done like in nineteen, which we've had them come and present to us just. In September or August, right before Lisa came, I think they had, we had them re-present to us, but the numbers are what need to be updated.
Well, I think it's more than that.
It is more.
You have to remember that everybody talks about the pump, but our levy is not compliant right now.
Yes.
Right, yes.
And if if they decide to come here and remap us and we're not compliant.
Yes.
We have the potential for having more flood.
Make it worse.
So that really needs to be a priority and there is not a list and a budget of everything that would have to be done. So there's that. And then there's everybody talks about pumping of the water of the creek to the river to be able to decrease the footprint of what could flood. But nobody has, I I've never heard anybody talk about McClure and it seems odd to me that six years ago, somebody did this study and never refers to that. This is J U.
When McClure was here, I had, I personally had a conversation with Pete Crawford.
Well, I'll reach out to Pete, cause that that, why would that not be.
And maybe I misunderstood what he, what he said to me. But so it was my understanding that when we just did our, our last levy inspection, that, that our levy was cleared. I mean, and there were things that were deficient before that were better now that they gave us an upgrade on.
There's still things we have to repair.
Yeah, can we go back to the creek? And yes, the the lift or the pump, whichever would be essential. But. That being said, when my kids were little and sad when we had our ten inch raid, it wasn't the fact that the niche that was out. It was all of the dead that went to the end where it couldn't, it could not go anywhere. I mean, it would just jam. And that's what caused the Red Oak Creek to flood through town.
Oh, it plugged the floodgates.
My gosh, yes. I mean, and and I look, you know, we're, we're fairly close to it. When I look at the big old trees that have fallen in the last. Fifteen, twenty years. It's, you're gonna have same thing.
But when you have like the university come, like they say, don't touch any of that. But that's better.
Cause they say it tightens up the ground.
Oh, it might tighten up the ground, but I'm gonna tell you right now, there was a lot of stuff that's.
I hear you.
Well, to me, that's the whole like, which is it?
Yeah.
Really know. Like we're like, oh, shouldn't we clean up the creek?
On those banks a lot of times, all that grass gets flattened down and just mud just. So.
I mean, it needs cleaned up. The further south you go, the more needs cleaned up. People that dump stuff in it, but.
And the other thing that this is like my thing, like this is the reality. And there's, it it can't be that it's, no matter what we spend, it's worth it. Because what nobody seems to be able to tell me right now is if we spend. Everybody says at least two million just on the pump. What does that gain for a decrease in the footprint? And if it's not that many houses, then how are you gonna charge the taxpayers two million dollars to save a few houses? Because what normal things happen when people flood is houses go away.
Yeah.
And that's not being insensitive to the people that live in that area, but you have to balance. Getting federal money to take some houses away that are in the floodplain if they get to a certain point, or what you spend on everybody's dollars. Or do you have, is there grant money or whatever, you know, but so that's to me, like, we don't have all the answers to be able to say, what would we spend? What would look different if we spent it and what is saved because of.
Just gonna give us those answers.
A lot more like in the right direction, yes.
Yeah, I don't have the answer, but I'm just saying that.
Right.
There's a lot of tree that will be going floating down when that floods.
Well, when they do the bridge reconstruction, will they have to clean up that part of it?
Again, I, what I don't understand is people say like, the earthy people don't make it seem like you're supposed to clean it out. I don't know. That's where to me, there's a lot of.
There's a happy balance, I think.
There's gotta be. Somewhere. I don't know.
Because if you take that kind of stuff out, then it's erosion control.
If they've not lived next to it and it doesn't affect me because. Cool law is a lot lower than I am, but to see what happens to those homes. You know, is earthy right or is earthy wrong? I don't know, but that's, that's a mess.
Well, and there's more to it, the earthy, that's not just leaving that. They do other things. That help alleviate of of the pooling of water. Yeah. So they do other things around the air, around, around, around it. They put in like reservoirs and things like that that make it beautiful. So I can show you pictures, but it's hard to imagine.
You're talking about developing the Red Oak Creek base.
That's what I was talking about, yes. Which is still a possibility with the, with the plan that we kind of came up with from the mayor's workshop, so. Which still could happen, even if we, but we still have to deal with this floodplain issue and our levy certification. And that, this is to support the levy recertification.
And again, reminding everyone that was at the strategic planning, this was in the top eight goals.
Yes.
That's the reason we need to get going. And if approved.
Yeah.
I wish someone could tell me how how it happened that landowners owned the creek.
It's an Iowa thing.
It is an Iowa.
In Wisconsin, the D N R owns to the middle and then you own your.
Okay.
And in Iowa, everybody owns to the middle of the water.
It's so weird.
Makes it hard to manage.
Yes, it does, without a doubt. Yeah, but thank you. I always wondered that.
Anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Fred off.
I'll second.
Bradley. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Lester. Yes. He break.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Fred off.
Yes.
I'm so glad we do this. Number twenty-one, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one or zero one zero two. Uh, to approve the D O R grant for rustic lawn with McCun Rental LLC in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. While we approved it in the past, in the way that we approved the financials, I do like. Just feel like it's more transparent. Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve that.
Lester.
I'll second.
Bills. Any discussion? Roll call.
He break.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Fred off.
Yes.
Lester. Yes.
Number twenty-two, this is just a reminder that because of the Labor Day weekend, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September second. At five thirty here at the same time. And then Monday, September fifteenth, those are our two meetings in September. Uh, reports, city administrator.
I don't think that I have too much. Outside of the stuff that we just talked about. Plugging away, I think that stuff with the software is every month gets a little bit easier. So we're plugging away at that. Otherwise, trying to keep things moving and nuisances and.
How was your conference?
It was the most boring conference I have ever attended in.
Yeah, I like it.
Sorry to hear that.
It was just, I I almost felt like because you just got the grant and you haven't done anything yet, that it was not. Useful to my brain and what I needed to know. And the one thing that I need to know is. Which is one of my upcoming agenda items is we need to get an R F Q out there. To hire a consultant, because I'm also, I don't have time for this. Like, it's good, but we're supposed to have a consultant to help us, but. Then when you go to the EPA and say, can you give me help? They're like, oh, no, we can't help you. But you can go see the TAB people, which are the technical assistants for brownfields, like at the University of Kansas. Kansas State.
Kansas State.
So you're talking about like a grants administrator kind of person?
No.
No, something different?
No, they're consulting engineers.
They basically like get paid by the EPA to help you, but they're not the EPA.
Yeah.
And then they just tell you, like, to me, you would just hand me a template and I would fill it in with Red Oak and what we're doing and. I finally got something from Kansas State, but that was my biggest focus, because everything else is like for not until we get a little bit further along. So when you think about it being like a four-year process and that you're going two months after you got your grant, like. I don't know. It just wasn't incredibly helpful. It was certainly good to like FaceTime with people that. Were gonna be working with and getting to see people and learn, but it did not feel like what I'm used to feeling like when I.
Sorry to hear that.
I know. It was a requirement, so I was there in presence.
They paid for you to be there.
Right.
So.
So it was fine. It was. I guess remember too, like some of you that are going to the league will need to arrange that, but that's after our next two meetings. So we got a month, but. Yeah, that's coming up. So.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. Okay, mayor's report. I just have three things. And I mentioned the Safe Streets for All. Survey that Amapa put together in partnership with SWIPCO. Um, we want as many community people to do that and that's, um, it's kind of a little challenge. And when you do the survey. There's nine priorities and you move them. So you move them so that the most important one is number one, then the next most important, but then you have to move them over. Into a little window that says one, one that says two, one that says three. I sat there and I kept saying I had to identify my number ones and I kept. Doing it and doing it.
Like they'll get a lot of responses to that.
I hope that that people figure it out, because I've, I've been done them where you move the content, but I've never had to move it over. Into another little thing. So there's that, but you can put comments in there about public safety, about sidewalks. You, um, they also want you to map any accidents that you've witnessed or are aware of. Put those on a pin on the map. Um, or areas that you think are concerning. So that they start to identify it. They've got a great dashboard already, but it does, it would be good to have citizens' input on where you think things are dangerous. Uh, second, we, Lisa and I did go to the car show. It was somewhat sad, because there was about half the amount of cars, because they were spread out.
They were so hot.
It was so hot, but I think there were, there were four other shows going on, so. Um, and she mentioned that a lot of times mayors give out an award for car shows too, which I. You think about, yeah.
They would probably be receptive, but they've never done that.
Yep. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, um, Farmers Mutual Telephone Company did reach out to Lisa and I and let us know that they're proceeding. Um, to do basically a number of blocks, a two-block wide strip. From Eighth Street to Broadway, almost the Broadway.
So it was more like first and then two blocks south.
Two blocks south of Oak Street, so.
Kind of like where I live.
So I think they've publicized it now, so. Um, but that will be happening and it's a very low cost to get it done. So.
There is a, basically what they're gonna do now is every quarter, they will announce a new area.
Yes.
And then they will promote that area for signups.
Yes.
And then as soon as they know how many signups and how much money they have to invest in the next section, then they'll go to the next section and the next section and. So each quarter, they'll announce a new geographic area that'll be slated for an addition.
But I think they plan on doing this in the.
May say they can keep working all winters.
Yeah.
They probably can.
Okay, Jeff, how, okay, city council, I'm supposed to do him last, so Adam, let's start with you. Yeah.
Watering, you've been watering now, but.
Back over to Brian.
You split this last two.
I'm done.
Denise.
Um, M C D C meeting and Ben was on board and Tim will maybe touch base with that a little bit. It was nice to see him. He's. He's going full force and it was, it's a good thing, I think. Did National Night Out, that was a great community event. Fortunately, it wasn't a hundred and ten in the shade, so that helped with that. There were a lot of people out there. Which was very kind. Lisa, I'm sorry you had to miss it. My boring meeting, but. And like you, the car show, I I think a lot of that car show though, it was so hot.
It was hot, it was heat.
You know, and people, they were very nice, but and then, um, just something on a different, I went to the school meeting last night. For the possibility of leaving Hawkeye Ten, and I thought they did a really, really nice job of presenting. And I would say the consensus of the group was there is they are definitely for leaving Hawkeye Ten, just because of the enrollment drop. And it's better for our kids. Um, that's it.
Good deal.
Nice to your vendor.
Summed most of it up.
Tim, go ahead.
I agree, was at the community meeting last night for the wig, potential wig change, uh, also the national out, yeah, M C D C, well. Still early, but it was only been his fifth day, so we didn't expect, you know. We joked and said that it's too bad Bombards didn't announce just a little bit later, then he could have taken credit for that, but unfortunately, I just wasn't there. Um, like, can you have Red Oak Bear partnership meetings? We met with the Lakens, uh, this last Wednesday, they come down. And took a tour of the community and then, um, we kind of gave them a housing presentation as well as some plans that we've, we've got for some. Units going up in Bancroft and, um. The Webster lots. Um, I built in for a shout out for the E M A, um, meeting that we had here recently and then obviously the special council meeting.
Sharon.
Um, like everyone, I I had the chamber booth for National Night Out and, um. The Fatsy Con Show, I went down there and, um, also, um, we had a fundraiser for the country club. Do a really getting new furniture for the, so. We're on our way to do that after the renovation of the year. So we got that done and now we'll work on furniture funders.
Have they got the chef yet or?
We'll work on.
All right, Brian.
I just wanna go last or best to get to say everything, and then I wanna say anything.
County supervisors.
Yeah, I do that.
That was really my you.
Yeah.